Welcome everyone to the June 17 public hearing. We welcome all of you here. Tonight, the topic of the hearing is the E-Web Riverfront Master Plan. City Manager, would you please introduce the topic for tonight's public hearing?
Thank you Mayor. Tonight's public hearing is to consider a draft ordinance for the concurrent land use applications included in E-Web's proposal to implement the Riverfront Master Plan. As we've covered in the last two council work sessions on this topic, these applications are proposed to establish the regulatory framework needed for future redevelopment of E-Web's downtown riverfront property and to carry out the policy in the downtown plan that requires the city's approval of E-Web's Riverfront Master Plan. These land use applications include a metro plan amendment, refinement plan adoption and related amendments, code amendments, a zone change, and a Willamette Greenway permit.
Thank you. Those wishing to speak during this public hearing should have already submitted a completed request to speak form to the information desk. We have each provided a written summary disclosing any ex parte contacts to staff and the city attorney for the record and as part of the packet for tonight's hearing. At this time, I will ask each council confirm those statements and ask whether or not you have any additional ex parte contacts to disclose at this time. Also, I would ask that each council state for the record whether any ex parte contact has impaired your ability to be impartial. So we'll start down here with Greg.
Mayor, I have had no ex parte contact, no conversation, and nothing to declare.
Okay. And?
No, no, and no.
Okay. Ben? No. No to all of the requests?
No, no.
Okay. Counselor Pryor?
I'm getting repetitive. No, none, and no.
And likewise, no, no, and no.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, in reference to the written statement, in reviewing it, I noticed that there were some miscommunications between myself and the legal staff. In the last sentence should read, "I have received general emails from city staff addressed to the entire council and mayor," instead of the way it's written regarding this issue. Also, I've seen some TV news reports, radio reports, and newspaper reports, but nothing that could prevent me from being fair and impartial.
Thank you for that. Counselor Zelenka?
No to all of your questions.
Right, Counselor Clark?
I've had no ex parte direct input on this particular master plan, but as indicated in my statement, for a couple of years, I've had more contacts and said more things about my thoughts on the general area and its long term than I can possibly remember, but I-
We agree.
Yes. I think it'll turn out that I was right. That's another whole conversation. I think that I have no problem being impartial in this particular action.
Counselor Surratt?
And my answers are also no, none, and no.
Thank you all. City Attorney, do you have anything that you needed to say in response to anything here?
Nope, thank you.
You have Counselor Pauling's comments?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Please note that under the quasi judicial procedures for this request, testimony must be directed towards the applicable approval criteria or other criteria that the speaker believes to apply to the decision. The applicable approval criteria for this, for the package of land use applications in E-Web's request are from Eugene Code Sections 9.7730, 9.8065, 9.8815, 9.8424, and 9.8865. I would also note that council has passed a motion for this consolidated hearing which allows new evidence as part of the testimony on E-Web's request. The failure of anyone to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the city council and interested parties opportunity to respond will preclude appeal on that issue. The failure to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the council to respond to the issue precludes any action for damages in the circuit court. The request to speak forms have been separated into three groups, and speakers will be called in the following order: the applicant's representatives and those in support of the proposed ordinance, those with a neutral position, and those opposed to the proposed ordinance. Please give your name and address when you come to the podium to speak. You will have three minutes to comment. The timer and lights on the podium indicate the time you have to speak. The red light indicates the end of your three minutes. I will now open the public hearing with the applicant's representatives and those in support of the proposed ordinance. So those in support, and there are 21 of those. Don't feel you have to take all the time. So John Simpson is up first, followed by John Brown. Welcome.
Mayor Piercy, distinguished members of the council, my name is John Simpson, Eugene Water and Electric Board Commissioner-at-Large. My residence is 3843 Ashford Drive, Eugene, Oregon 97405. Imagine for a moment a riverfront restaurant, a little jazz music playing in the background, outdoor seating lit dimmed holiday lights. A couple meets for the first time over a delightful dinner. Tentatively, they hold hands, and from their vantage point next to the boardwalk, they watch a heron flying past a kayaker paddling down the Willamette River. Is it a dream? No. Blissfully unaware of the civic contributions made by community advisory teams, planners, developers, and more than 1,000 interested residents over the past two years, or the master plan itself, these two people are simply in the moment, and they're soaking up the benefits of this beautiful environment. After dinner, the couple moseys up the path to the steam plant brew pub to sample our region's finest ale, and on their walk home, it's still early enough to swing by the bakery and pick up a baguette, the kind with seeds, and visit a friend in their new condo on the property. This vibrant, active, people-centered place is taking shape right here in our city. With a mixture of pride and excitement, I offer this package to you for your approval on behalf of our current and previous E-Web commissioners. This multi-year effort grew out of a few simple principles: that our downtown riverfront is a community-wide asset with greater value as a vibrant, active, people-centered place centered compared to an industrial site; that through inter-agency partnerships and collaboration with the community, public support for a redeveloped riverfront could be easily achieved; and whatever plan gets ultimately adopted, it enhances public access to the river's riparian edge. This forward-thinking package integrates natural and built environments while holding true to our aspiration to reconnect downtown to the river. In doing so, we protect and teach people about our city's industrial and cultural history. I hope you'll agree this proposal represents a thoughtful balance of a new development, adaptive reuse, and public open space. Think about it: redevelopment of this current vacant surplus property will provide contributions to the city's property tax base. Your support is going to send a clear message that you concur with the community's vision for a mixed-use environment or neighborhood on the waterfront, implementing key concepts from the Envision Eugene process. We are grateful to the public for the unprecedented level of involvement in the master planning process and encourage your approval of this land use package. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact me personally, and I will make sure to put you in touch with the right people with the right answers. Thank you very much for your time and for your service to this community.
Thank you. John Brown is next, followed by Karen Knudsen.
Mayor and members of council, John Brown, Ward 5. For purposes of disclosure, in a past life, I have appraised this property. I am in the real estate business, but I have no present or future contemplated interest in the outcome of your decisions or your recommendations. I represent E-Web Wards 4 and 5. I'm going to take a little different approach from Commissioner Simpson and let you know about some of the things we have done as a board. We have, we took the first steps to vacate this by building Roosevelt Operations Center, and we moved to West Eugene, and we developed a state-of-the-art facility there that's going to last us for 50 to 75 years. We know that because this is Eugene, we're going to have pros and cons. It just goes without saying it's going to happen. But I also want you to keep in mind the context of the balance. We have the community's largest park right across the river from this, and you've got to remember that we just can't have all the open space everybody wants and still have maintained the urban growth boundary. So we believe that we've struck the right balance. I've lived here for over 60 years. I have never seen such an involved community process as this and such a collaborative process as this. This goes beyond anything I've ever seen, and I've seen a lot of land use plans from going way back to cone breeding to the current, and I think this one gets the star. This one absolutely hit it right where it needed to be. We have the opportunity to come together and do this the right way and without delays, because the more delays, the more uncertainty, the greater the risk, the greater the risk, the less the value. We have a commitment to the ratepayers and the community of Eugene to maximize the value of this asset while maintaining the integrity of the community and the open space amenities that we've implemented into this plan. I want you to listen to the endorsements that are going to follow, because I think you're going to hear from a diverse group of people that's going to talk about how we've accomplished this, and the experts that we've retained have done an exemplary job at doing this. The market's improving. There's no question about it, and we have, right now, we've got in the stages of a memorandum of understanding, releasing a portion of the unused space in our building. We've got letters of intent on some of the portions of the property, and we haven't even put it on the market. People are already knocking on the door. So I think this is going to be very successful. I ask you to support the plan in front of you, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Karen Knudsen, followed by Colin MacArthur.
I'm Karen Knudsen, project designer and project manager with Ralbroca Architects at 1 East Broadway in Eugene.
Can you speak up, please?
Certainly, can do that. Thank you. I was the project manager for the E-Web Riverfront Master Plan and Public Involvement Process, and I've been working in partnership with Cameron McCarthy on the land use phase since 2010. Collectively, our community has studied and wondered about and wished for the redevelopment of E-Web's riverfront property for decades, and it's been my pleasure to help carry this work forward over the last four and a half years. But I have to say that this vision builds on several decades of work by other groups of citizens, E-Web and city staff, and volunteering professionals, and it also builds on several decades of work by Eugene City Council. It's a long-held dream in our community to see more people and less asphalt along Eugene's downtown riverfront. In 2007, city council set the ground rules for the master planning process. I brought this newspaper article from that year, from May, as a reminder of how fortunate that we were to have a public utility and elected officials in support of a robust and meaningful process to plan for this property's future, and I'm happy to say that we've followed through on your directives and that that planning effort is now complete. We all know that Eugene believes greatly, deeply, in a robust process. The bigger challenge is making sure that great process leads to great outcomes. This is especially true with projects like the riverfront site that hold so much potential and also so many aspirations. But the first step towards any successful redevelopment project is having a community in support of that redevelopment, and we have that with this project. So here's a very quick 45-second summary of what we've been up to. With input from more than 1,000 members of the community, a master plan that meets all of the riverfront criteria and model sustainable urbanism was developed for the E-Web Riverfront site. A community advisory team that council helped appoint, some of whom are here with us this evening, met every other week for more than two years before recommending a plan to E-Web's Board of Commissioners who then unanimously endorsed it. Leading up to that point, hundreds of people attended our public events over a 12-month period, and one longtime community member summarized the entire effort by saying, "In 50 years, this is the best we've ever done it in Eugene." E-Web's Board of Commissioners then unanimously approved the plan, and a few months ago, our planning commission unanimously recommended this package to council. So that's great process, here's some great outcomes. At a 27-acre riverfront city center site, we now have a place that is ready to move forward and contribute to the vitality of our community. There are opportunities for adaptive reuse and also new development. There are bustling riverfront amenities such as Restaurant Row, a leafy interpretive cultural landscape proposal for the open space, and an improved continuous riverbank trail that all point towards a downtown riverfront that is uniquely Eugene's. It goes without say that this site can play a much better role in our city, and it can be a much better neighbor to our river. There is an enormous amount we're proud of in this plan, and I hope the council unanimously support it.
Thank you. Colin MacArthur is next, followed by Roger Gray.
I'm Colin MacArthur with Cameron McCarthy Landscape Architecture and Planning. Our address is 160 East Broadway. I'm the project manager for the land use phase and have been working with Ralbroca Architects and our team of consultants in the preparation of the application package before you. When we started this project in 2010, our team was asked to translate the vision into clear and objective standards for redevelopment, to establish project compliance with state and local land use laws, and to deliver a regulatory framework that provided certainty that the master plan vision would be realized and flexibility to adapt to redevelopment constraints. To accomplish these objectives, we have put forth a proposal consisting of amendments to the metro plan, amendments to the downtown plan and riverfront park study, administrative code amendments, changes to the city zoning map, a request for Willamette Greenway permit approval, adoption of a new specific area plan as a guiding policy document, and the establishment of a new special area zone. Adoption of the ordinance will establish Eugene's 13th Special Area Zone, specific to the downtown riverfront site. The implementation tools were selected and designed to achieve better community design and to remove barriers to redevelopment. The special area zone tool was selected because that approach aligns with city, adopted city policies and recommended actions, specifically City Growth Management Policy 2. The master plan establishes the foundation for a form-based or hybrid code, and the master plan vision cannot be implemented solely by a base zone or overlay zone, and customized development standards are needed to address development setbacks, view corridors, adaptive reuse, urban form, public access, and other key features of the vision. Development code is based on form-based principles. However, this is a hybrid code because it exists within Chapter 9 and is designed to work with other code sections. This process started 10 years ago with the concept to reconnect downtown to the river. That concept was articulated in the downtown plan. The plan contains a whole chapter on the riverfront. The chapter sets out the criteria for the preparation of a master plan. Those criteria and additional requirements for implementation are included in the 2007 agreement between E-Web and the city. The completed master plan meets and exceeds all the approval criteria. The applicant has met all of its obligations under the agreement and has put forth an implementation package for your approval. The process has now come full circle, exactly as it was intended. This has been a long process, 10-plus years in the making. In the meantime, progress has come to downtown Eugene. We have before you a community-supported vision and are now ready for redevelopment to come to the riverfront. We thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Roger Gray is next, followed by Mia Nelson.
Mayor Piercy, councilors, Mr. Reese and city staff, my name is Roger Gray. I'm the general manager at E-Web, 500 East Fourth Avenue. This is an exciting time. There are many things that have taken place in the past. As Colin just indicated, this has been at least a 10-year process to lead to this point of developing an E-Web redevelopment of the riverfront site. Long ago, there was a partnership between city and E-Web that was created an MOU, laid out the roles for both organizations in creating the master plan. Together, we selected a community advisory team, CAT team, to help with the design process. I hope that you'll find that E-Web has fulfilled its obligations under that MOU. I believe this is evidenced by the public engagement and the strategies that have led to this evening. I'm struck by this, how this effort really translates well into Envision Eugene. Concepts of 20-minute neighborhoods, residential redevelopment, brownfield site redevelopment, these are all embedded in this plan. I hope you'll find this fits into the Envision Eugene concept. This work and these plans have been a large team effort. We are truly grateful to the residents that have participated in the plan, and we recognize maybe not everybody agrees, but there is overwhelming support. There are alternative views. My question is, who would pay for those alternative views? In my opinion, I haven't found anybody that could create an alternative view that could be paid for. We are fortunate to have many local experts that you've heard from this evening, as well as others, that have helped us create this plan. They understand the market realities, they understand the aspirations of this community, they understand the engineering and environmental aspects, and the regulatory issues associated with this package. Excellent work by the CAT team. E-Web city planning staff has set this up for success. They have found reasonable balance. Tonight, we are at a crossroads. I can tell you that I personally see two paths forward: the balanced plan before you or what I call status quo, which is Latin for do nothing. E-Web financially cannot afford a redo. We are in a very different financial situation today than several years ago. We have many financial commitments that are spilling our utility and financial challenges before us. We have to get back to running the electric and water utilities that are important to this community. We think the timing of this is wonderful, though, in terms of the ability to contribute to jobs, tax revenue, and exciting envision that you've heard about tonight. All I can say is that this is approved by the council and the city. We will do our best to work with city, developers, and the community to make this vision happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mia Nelson is next, followed by Desiree Moore.
Good evening. I'm Mia Nelson. I'm representing 1,000 Friends of Oregon, PO Box 51252 in Eugene. We all know how important redevelopment and increased density is going to be in the future as Eugene tries to accommodate its 20-year population forecast, and I think that it's critical that we do that in ways that are compatible with surrounding neighborhoods and that have broad support of the community, and this plan does that very well. I've been very impressed with the public process throughout and with the wide level of support that it has. I have asked myself at times, why is it that it has such broad support when so many times projects are, don't have that support and are actually quite contentious? And I believe the reason is the good planning. I don't think that it's because this was an easy site to develop without controversy. I think that if it had not been planned so well, you might not see broad support in the audience right now. I think it's a testament to what good planning can do with very difficult issues. And I want to just highly praise E-Web for taking the initiative to do such a good job and not let this turn into a contentious issue like it could have. And jumping off from there, I'd encourage you to think of this as a model for how other things could be planned in Eugene. Most landowners don't have enough land to justify a project, a planning process like this just for their site, but your neighborhood refinement planning could be this sort of an endeavor, and I think if it was done carefully, you could wind up with more support for redevelopment efforts than you have now. And I think that would be money very well spent. There are neighborhood leaders out there now who very much want to have neighborhood planning done in the same way that it was done, to the same level of quality that we saw on the E-Web site, and I just want to encourage you to think about really investing in good planning, because I think it could be the answer towards remedying some of the discord that we have seen when projects come up. Thank you.
Thank you. Desiree Moore is next, followed by Daniel Rosenthal.
Thank you. My name is Desiree Moore, and I live at 115 Rustic Place, and I'm going to take a couple of seconds of my three minutes and say something that you probably don't hear publicly enough. Thank you. Thank you for all the hard work that you guys do, because it's, I couldn't do it. So thank you very much for the work that you guys do. The work that the CAT was able to complete, and I was a member of the CAT, was not in my area of expertise. As a result, I was somewhat apprehensive about saying yes, because I knew it was major, I knew it could be a real hot topic, and I just wasn't sure if I had the level of commitment that would be needed in order to complete the task. I thought it over, talked with my family, decided I would go in, and if I was going to be in, I was going to be all in, thus I'm here tonight. I think it was good that I didn't know a lot about the process or about the property, because it allowed me to come to the table without any real preconceived notions of what the process or the developing the property would be like. I think that was a good thing. I think maybe not so good was that I had to ask a lot of questions. I mean, I really had to ask a lot of questions. And for some of the members of the CAT team that were maybe a little bit more experienced in this area, I'm not sure how they felt about me asking so many questions, but I asked them anyway. And what I came away with was an understanding that the CAT listened. It even listened, they even listened to me, and I was a member. So it made it real easy for me to transfer that into community when it was time for us to listen to them. The CAT team represents great differences when it comes to life experiences, professional and cultural experiences as well, and much like the rest of the community, we did not always get along, but we listened. We listened to each other, we listened to the professionals that were there to answer our questions and guide us, and one of the things I'm most proud of is that we listened to the community. There was major outreach done. We listened to their voices, and the plan before you is a direct result of what they had to say. There's a lot of hard work, a lot of hard, thoughtful work that's gone into the plan. The CAT's done some of the work. The community has also done some of the work. And now it's your turn, and now is the time. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you. Daniel Rosenthal is next, followed by Mark Johnson.
I was an architecture student who came up with a potential design for the E-Web site, and so I'd say I think there's great potential for the development of the E-Web site as a whole to contribute to the life of Eugene. And for our studio, we started this project with the master plan in mind and developed our projects either following its guidelines or not. And one idea in particular from the master plan that I took to drive my design was that of connecting to the city to the river and making a people place alongside the river. And when it came to selecting an area of focus, I chose to work with the steam plant, which seemed like a perfect place for an iconic building that would achieve this goal of connection. Its location at the southern end of the site, right across from the proposed new Eckray Railroad Crossing, would allow it to welcome people to the site and even draw them in, especially where it lit up at night. It also stands closer to the river than any new building will be allowed to according to the master plan, and from this vantage point, many great views of the river can be achieved. Also, by virtue of its location, it can be seen from several vistas in the surrounding areas, such as the pedestrian bridges in the north bank. The other aspect of the steam plant that appealed to me was the historical industrial character of the building. Even in its current worn-down state, I think it has some charm and tells the story of the history of the site. The area surrounding the building is currently vacant and not particularly friendly to wildlife, so I saw it as a place for the riparian habitat adjacent to the river to expand and take on some of the characteristics of the site prior to its industrial use. From here, I came to see the site in terms of three layers: the historical layer embodied by the steam plant and the industrial remnants that occupy the site, the riparian habitat and the river, and finally, the new architectural expression that would signal the new function of the steam plant and the site as a whole. Together, these layers could create a rich experience for visitors and tell a story about Eugene, one that wouldn't be as powerfully told in another location. The program that I developed within the building was an art center with exhibit halls and a performance space, spaces that would continuously present new content via lively expression of the city. Even though this is how I developed the project, I think that a number of different programs could work here and still provide the layered experience. I think it's most important to recognize the value and potential for these three aspects of the site: the new architectural character, the historical industrial character, and the wild riparian habitat, to create an iconic place for Eugene that connects the city to the river. And I think whatever's built here can become a major contribution to the city and expression of Eugene's character.
Thank you.
And I have some images that I can give to you, the project that I came up with.
Mark Johnson is next, followed by Will Shaver.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Thanks for your service and for hearing us out tonight. So my name is Mark Johnson, 1320 Inglewood Avenue, Eugene, and I'm here to voice my support for the ordinance implementing the land use code for the E-Web property. This has been a long and extensive process. I was appointed to serve on the citizens advisory team for the E-Web master planning project, so I have particular interest in seeing this through. I was glad to serve on the CAT, and through a very collaborative, open, and participative process, the community was able to come to an agreement on what qualities are important for the future of the E-Web Riverfront. The code amendments are a necessary step to move the project forward and give certainty and flexibility to the development of the property. This has been a well-vetted project, and this step is critical to ensure the smart, sustainable, and appropriate development can happen on the site. You have been partners in this process, and I encourage you to take this important step and approve the ordinance implementing the land use code for the E-Web property as written and approved by the planning commission. and approved by the planning commission. Thanks.
Will Shaver is next, followed by Shannon Dorr.
Good evening, councilors. Will Shaver, 2494 Portland Street, Ward 1. Been following this issue for a number of years, and I'm here today to urge you to move it forward. As a candidate for the E-Web Commission, I talked to a lot of my neighbors in Wards 1 and Ward 8, and I found people to be surprisingly well-informed on this issue. People are excited about their newest neighborhood in Eugene, potential to see this property redeveloped. The process leading to this decision today has been lengthy. Community involvement has been extensive. We've faced a few delays, but I'm excited that we're finally here at a council meeting. This site, to not mince words, is an impervious parking lot wasteland. It is. It's not pretty, but it will be. It will be gorgeous, and it will be a beautiful place to work and live and play. And I'm excited. I'm excited to have dinner on the waterfront. Right now, delay on this project costs us all. As E-Web ratepayers, we're paying for the maintenance and upkeep of the property as it sits unused. As users of city services, we're losing tax revenue from future residential and commercial use of the property. And as community members, we're missing out on Eugene's newest neighborhood and shopping district. This project fits our Envision Eugene Coles. As you know, Envision Eugene calls for our entirety of our commercial and our high-density residential to be placed within the UGB. This is the place. Surrounded by a river, a railroad, and an overpass with no major neighborhood opposition right next door, this is the place to put the density. This is the place to put the new commercial. Replace an impervious parking lot with the density that our city needs for the next 20 years. Thanks for your time.
Shannon Dorr is next, followed by Matt Tierney.
Hello, and thank you. My name is Shannon Dorr, and I'm a very recent graduate of the Architecture Program at the UBO. I think we just got our diplomas about two hours ago. And thank you very much. I will be attending the University of Bath next year for a master's degree in the conservation of historic buildings. I was a part of Brooke Muller's Terminal Studio this term and last term, looking at the E-Website. And I have to say that I specifically requested to use this project as my Terminal Studio because I knew that there were historic properties on the site that could be given some great attention. I also live, sorry, I didn't tell you this yet, 797 High Street. I think I have a very unique perspective about this because I'm pretty sure I'm the closest resident to this project. And I can tell you, there are four of us living in this house, and only one of us has a car, and we love it. I have a couple of images, but I can just submit them to the clerk, and you guys can look at them later. I know that there's going to be a packet going around with our projects that we've been working on this term. And I can tell you that this master plan was a joy to work with because we were able to have so much and so much research done for us to look at and be able to carry forward with our own plans. I did an adaptive reuse of the warehouse of the utilities complex, the barrel vaulted beautiful 1952 warehouse. And I believe that maintaining the historic fabric of Eugene hasn't been as important. I even have a diagram to show you how many pre-1960s buildings are left, and there are not many. And I think that this is a wonderful opportunity to use an existing structure and make a small business incubation area with low rent and different kinds of opportunities. There are many different market styles, and then transitional spaces, and then a full front of retail spaces. I am submitting this project to you all because I think this is a feasible project. I am giving you the groundwork of a building that can be built and people can afford to have their shops there. I spoke with Brandon, the owner of Belly, in the very beginning of this process, and I asked him, how did you maintain this business? Because small businesses usually have to close up after the first five years. And he said it was the small places, the small restaurant that we know now as Taco Belly, and being able to move to his new location in downtown Eugene because he was incredibly invested in the permanence and the rehabilitation of our downtown. So I would like to please approve what is in front of you and take into consideration that there is much to be done design-wise, but this is a beautiful foundation. Thank you very much.
Matt Tierney is next, followed by Phil Farrington.
My name is Matt Tierney, 795 Willamette, Eugene. I'm a recent graduate of the University of Oregon's School of Architecture and Allied Arts, where I pursued my Master of Architecture degree. In studying the E-Web master plan over the nine months, I've realized how critical this piece of land is in defining the future of this city and the importance of the master plan framework and making that future a realistic possibility. As a designer, I believe that the depth and breadth the master plan document is a testament not only to the complexity of the site, but more importantly, the careful synthesis of thousands of different interdependent factors by the planning team and the community throughout the design process. This site is an important stronghold along the Willamette River, literally because of its underlying geology and metaphorically because of its unwavering position as the connection between the river and the city. Its importance is shown in its rich cultural history, which I drew inspiration from in my own project as an urban Native American headquarters as part of an adaptive reuse of the steam plant. From early Californian Native American inhabitants to explorers, a regional hub of food and textile processing, the heart of E-Web's critical water and power operations, and now as a cultural magnet for a burgeoning population of ecologically and economically conscious citizens, I think that the master plan document allows for this rich and complex history to emerge while creating a realistic development framework which investors can see feasibility in both the short term and the long term. As I found through designing with the master plan at hand, this balance can be struck by the way that the code allows many uses to exist within the steam plant because the allowable addition of floors on top and on top of the substation on the southern facade. Further, functional naturalized areas in the landscape can intermingle in a but more developed areas, creating a much more interesting dialogue than either would independently. As has been said in past meetings, this can't be a park, and it can't be a mixed-use development, but it needs to be some sort of a combination of the two. I believe that the master plan creates a fertile framework for this type of development to occur through its varied height limitations, preserving view sheds, closed streets, and building massing on the site, and with provision for functional ecological open spaces, particularly the pollinator knoll and the entirety of the cap southern portion. I think that this portion of the site could be really dynamic ecologically if different methods were used. It's my opinion that at this critical point in the process, we need to stand behind our appointed designers, planners, engineers, and community members and the informed decisions that they have made. This is a flexible and well-thought-out document that allows change but prescribes accountability in a number of ways. The team is made up of incredibly smart people who have spent countless hours thinking about the many implications of any one single design decision, and I think that that depth of study needs to be respected. I would love to see this site turn into a vibrant cultural hub.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Phil Farrington is next, followed by Mary Enru.
Good evening, Mayor, councilors. Phil Farrington. I've been studying the E-Web master plan for months now from my home at 1160 Monroe, not for credit. About 20 years ago, I came to Eugene and was fortunate enough to start my career in parks planning and working on developing plans for East Alton Baker Park, as well as Island Park with Councilor Pryor, and also doing work for the city of Eugene for the developed the East Bank Trail and those greenway concepts relating to that. You know, this community is so blessed to be able to have these loving green arms that kind of envelop the river in so many places and in so many ways. And this is the one spot, though, where the community can come to the river, and it kind of takes those green arms and gives the river a gentle kiss. And so this is the place where I'm asking you to support this proposal and the ordinance associated with it, not for all the technical details of the number of density units we need and so forth, but I think this is going to make such a material improvement to this portion of the river. Ecologically, you know, I think psychically, as it relates to this town, the ability to kind of blend these uses and bring that toward the river is going to be immeasurable. I've been reading a book recently about Governor Bob Straub, who's the founder of the concept of the Willamette Greenway. And there's inside, the Oregonian Ursula Le Guin has a line in here that says, "If you see a whole thing, it seems that it's always beautiful, plan its lives. But up close, the world's all dirt and rocks, and day-to-day life's a hard job. You get tired, you lose the pattern." So I'm asking you, don't lose the pattern. For years now, we've been developing this plan, and this is the culmination of it. So I urge you to approve the ordinance before you. Thank you.
Mary Enru is next, followed by Ralph Parshall.
I'm Mary Enru. I live at 2159 Emerald Street, and I was privileged to be a member of the community advisory team that put forth this proposal to you for the Riverfront Master Plan. I'd like to speak just briefly on what I feel is the validity of the process. We met for two years and met with a lot of different experts on various aspects of this project, people who had the experience that we didn't have, but as members of the community, were able to grill them, ask them, see how, and really brainstorm how this project could come together. And it was impressive. We met with members of the community on a regular basis. We had open meetings like you do, and people came regularly to tell us what we should know about this project. And I feel that the project that we've brought to you represents the best thinking of this team, the experts in this community, and I urge you to support it.
Thank you. Ralph Parshall is next, followed by Cheryl Nessary. Don't see him? All right, well, then we'll move on to Cheryl, who evidently got signed in twice. She'll only get one turn anyway.
Is she for or against? Against? That's what happens when you have somebody doing your work for you. My name is Cheryl Nessary. I live at 235 East Third Avenue, and I'm in a contest with Shannon to know who is closest to this project. So, Mayor and City Council members, thank you for the opportunity to tell you that I'm in favor of the proposed ordinance for the land use code changes for the E-Web property. My husband and I live downtown in the neighborhood that Eugene Skinner plotted for Skinner City, the East Skinnerbutte Historic District. Some of the residents of our neighborhood worked in the, or some of the first residents in our neighborhood, worked in the woolen, flowering, and excelsior mills right near the E-Web property. For them, the river provided power so that they could earn a living. Times have changed. The few industrial buildings that remain in the area have changed with the times through adaptive reuse and are now thriving restaurants and retail. Those buildings near High Street and Fifth Avenue are hiding one of the best-kept secrets in Eugene: access to the most scenic view of the Willamette River. The Riverfront Master Plan links that part of the river and the amazing view with the rest of downtown again. The plan includes areas to recreate, shop, eat, and live. But this plan cannot be realized without changes to the current zoning. Zone changes would allow for mixed-use housing and retail. For us, it increases the overall downtown population to get closer to that magic number that will attract more retail. We're hoping for a grocery store and a neighborhood-type hardware store. For you, it balances the demographics and adds middle-income residents to downtown's existing student and senior populations. Development also means more revenue dollars. I urge you to approve the land use code ordinance so that the Willamette River can be made a part of downtown Eugene, a great city for arts and outdoors.
Rob Zaco is next, followed by Alma Jesus.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Rob Zaco. I live at 1280B East White Avenue in Eugene. I'm speaking just as a citizen tonight, actually one who's up and particularly involved in this project, but as a citizen who knows a little bit about transportation. So I'm going to talk to you about chapter and verse of code, and I'm going to talk to you about sort of my own aspirations. I believe this is a quasi-judicial hearing, and you're supposed to consider conditions in chapter and verse. So what are those that I know about? Oregon Goal 12 on Transportation Reduction Reliance on Automobiles, the Transportation Planning Rule. More recently, the State of Oregon has a policy to reduce greenhouse gas emissions from cars and light-duty trucks. Locally, our transplan, our lineup with the regional transportation plan and the Eugene TSP are consistent with that and talk about reducing reliance on the automobile. The growth management policies adopted almost 20 years ago, several of those speak to this particular application. Support the UGB is number one. Number two is encourage infill redevelopment. Number three is encourage mixed-use development. Number 10 is encourage transportation-efficient land use patterns. Number 11 is increase use of alternative modes of transportation. And more recently, updating that in Envision Eugene is certainly consistent with this, but in particular, the fourth pillar talks about promoting compact urban development efficient transportation options. So what does this all have to do with the E-Web Riverfront Master Plan? It's all rocket science. Basically, if you build things centrally, you make it denser, you provide a mix of where people can work, live, shop, play, and you provide alternative ways to get there: bike paths and pedestrian. Not everybody's going to take advantage of those, but some people will. It's consistent with so much that we're wanting to do, and so I would say that this is certainly consistent with the city's plans, and you have an option to prove this. I don't know if you're required to do so or not. I would urge you to do so. But that's all chapter and verse. What I would really like to say is there are exactly two places where I can bike along the Willamette River. We've got a wonderful bike path. I can bike anywhere. But if I want to get a beer, there are exactly two places. There's the North Bank Restaurant and Sweet Waters, and I think that's it. For the second-largest city in Oregon, that's a little bit slim pickings. I would hope we'd have at least a third and fourth option to get beer or maybe a soft drink or ice cream on the river with a view, and I think that's why you should approve this proposal. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alma Jesus is next, followed by Laura Potter.
Sorry, I have allergies. My name is Alma Famiche Jesus. I'm a young professional living here in Eugene at 610 Palomino Drive. Many great cities have a destination riverfront. It's a place where the community and visitors can congregate and gather to enjoy the river, to eat, and to even shop, which we really hope people do when they come down to this area because it helps our community. What excites me most about the proposed redevelopment of the E-Website is the opportunity for Eugene to create a destination along the river and for our community members and for visitors who come in into our community to enjoy. This proposal gives Eugene a unique opportunity to create a vibrant riverfront, an extension of our great downtown, and a place where we can enjoy from time to come. I look forward to the day that I can meet with my friends after work along the river for a beer, a glass of wine, or for dinner, and also to bring the many guests I bring into our community to a new area to spend more money to help support our community. Thank you.
Laura Potter is next, followed by John Rell.
My name is Laura Potter. I live at 4016 Josh Street. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the Eugene Area Chamber of Commerce. The former E-Website along the Willamette River represents unparalleled redevelopment potential and an opportunity for our community to create a destination space extending our downtown to the river. The work to date on this project has brought forward a unified The work to date on this project has brought forward a unified and balanced plan for the E-Web site that is consistent with what you've heard from fellow citizens, in harmony with community planning philosophies such as In Vision Eugene that promote increased density and redevelopment, consistent with criteria set out in the downtown plan which calls for an active, vibrant people place, sensitivity to river environment via appropriate setbacks, and elements that teach us about river and our city's history, that balances uses on the site. We have 14 acres of development and redevelopment, eight acres of parks and open space, and five acres of right-of-way and roads. This process has used a set of guiding principles developed early in the process to guide the work. These principles address topics ranging from sustainable urbanism to ecology to economics. In addressing economics, the master plan seeks to contribute to regional economic vitality by generating a financial return to benefit E-Web ratepayers and contributing to the city tax base. With the Northwest Community Credit Union groundbreaking earlier today and the approval of the HUB project, the time is right to extend the momentum we already have in downtown and along Franklin to the river. And we have to ask ourselves, if not here, in a premier location that has been in industrial use for decades, on public land that can be converted to mixed use, that complements our downtown, and that's supported by the community, then where? This is the perfect place to put this kind of development. The arguments that suggest that environmental interests in this site contend with development are just not accurate. Simultaneously designed urban and natural habitat can be integrated and be complementary, and this plan accomplishes that. Our community generously contributed thousands of hours of time to create an E-Web Riverfront Master Plan with broad public support. It's time to honor this effort by moving the land use application forward and committing to continuing to work together to achieve our vision of a vibrant waterfront destination that connects our downtown to the river. Thank you.
John Raul is next.
Mayor and councilors, I'm John Raul, 2590 Chula Vista Boulevard, Eugene, 97403. I'm part of the design team that worked with the community to create the E-Web Riverfront Master Plan and the land use package you're reviewing. Important measure of a master plan is whether it actually makes a difference in the way people see the future and the decisions they make. Earlier today, I was at the groundbreaking for the Northwest Community Credit Union Support Center building at the Courthouse site on Eighth Avenue between downtown and the river. Hard to imagine a better fit here than this project: mixed-use, pedestrian-oriented, community-driven, anticipating and helping create a vibrant urban city. Looking back at how this came about, I remember the positive response Northwest had to the Riverfront Master Plan when we explained it. They got the idea of a great loop connecting to the river with mixed-use vitality and accessible open space. It created confidence. The picture made sense, and it made a difference in their own decision to proceed. This is what a master plan should do: communicate vision, inspire confidence, catalyze action. It should build value and encourage higher-quality redevelopment. Today, we saw more evidence that it is doing just that, and it shows that we're on the right track. So I ask you to support the plan and the land use package so Eugene can continue to move forward with this vision. Thank you.
Next up, we're going to hear from those in a neutral position, and we have two people signed up for that. First is Sandra Bishop, followed by Tom Snyder.
Good evening, Sandra Bishop. My home address is 591 West 10th Avenue. My office is at 392 East Third, Third Mill. I'm here to support tonight. I choked up when it came to support or oppose or neutral because I have not read all of the documentation backing this up, but I'm definitely here tonight to support you going forward and moving on this. I was on the E-Web Board from 1997, I think it was, until 2006. One of the last actions that I took as a board member was to vote to move the operations off the site out to the Roosevelt site. So I've been looking forward to this for a long time. I also proposed earlier that year, 2006, that we get two city councilors and two E-Web commissioners together and just settle this master plan thing. Didn't quite work out that way, but I think the process we've gone through has been quite, as someone put it, robust and meaningful public process. But once the public process is over, then you've got to look at the realities of how this site's going to be redeveloped. So I wanted to bring up two or three points tonight. Number one, please, don't encourage spending money on riparian enhancements at this site. It's fine to, you know, move the Greenway boundary back and do all that, but this has already been looked at. This is a very poor investment to try to do actual enhancements of riparian area here. There are other places on the river that'd be much more valuable, better spent. If there's any public money that should be spent, my second point is it should be spent to secure the steam plant building. You need an anchor in order to get a development going here. If you could get any sort of public money in to save that building and use it as an anchor for commercial, you'd be far along the road of redevelopment. The third thing is, there's an old MOU between the city and E-Web, which essentially, as I understand it, allows the city to hold up any land sale for five years. I believe that should be renegotiated. I believe that once this ordinance is adopted, once the zoning changes are done, that should be really renegotiated so that you give a clear signal to any developer that E-Web and the city are out of the way, and here's the clear path forward to redevelop this land. So thank you so much for all the work that you've done on this and the CAT team and all the folks that have done redevelopment, but there's a lot of vision here, but now we need to look at the practical, what's the redevelopment going to look like? So hopefully, we can now all get out of the way and let the market take precedence.
Tom Snyder is next. Tom?
We meet again. My name is Tom Snyder. I have lived in Eugene since 1971. I am a museum professional, and I have a couple, three questions. I'm speaking in the middle because, like Sandra, I don't know enough of the small grain. I think you guys are taking care of that. Here's the thing, every time we've talked about this property, the one thing we've said is, "And the steam plant, which should be kept as some sort of a museum." And that's it. Nobody says anything more about it. Nobody asks about, "Was there a mechanism to go try and figure out how to do this?" Or, "Who might help pay for it?" Or, "Are there grant monies?" Or whatever. So the bottom line for me, I'm interested in making sure that what things you do with this change will accommodate a museum in that space. The second part of this is that the property itself, in my view, should always remain in the city's hands. If you want to lease it, something like that, fine, but if you get rid of it, you will rue the day. The third part of this is whether or not there is a mechanism for doing exploration of the steam plant as some sort of a museum. When you speak about museums these days, the word "change" is the primary thing that museums talk about. This is the way we used to do it, then we did it this way, then we did it this way, now we do it this way, and in the future, we'll do it that way. That particular facility, that building, with all of its historic steam hardware, would be an excellent place to start talking about those changes. When I first moved here in town, every third vehicle on Sixth or Seventh Avenue was a log truck. Not anymore. Change, change, change. That is the story that could be told in that facility. I'm pleased with the fact that other people, I liked the notion of a brew pub in the first floor of a repurposed steam plant, which, in my view, is the right way to think about the whole thing. So, good luck.
Thank you. Okay, now we're going to move on to those opposed to the proposed ordinance, and we have one person signed up for that, and that's David Sonnixon.
David Sonnixon, I live on Skyline Boulevard in Eugene, and I feel very exposed here as the only opponent. Thanks for taking the time to have this event, and I want to second what Mr. Snyder just said, and that is, "Hold on to the property." I don't favor this because, in my opinion, it's a bad policy to privatize public land, and that's what this is. And it also involves a subsidy. I haven't heard anybody even address that tonight. If a private developer came to E-Web and proposed something like this on their Mackenzie River property from which our water is drawn, I don't think E-Web would favor it. Taking a look at this area, I want to just comment on what Sandra Bishop just recently said, that don't try to enhance the riparian zone there. The idea of doing something that's hard, in my opinion, makes it even more of a challenge, and that's what I favor. I think all of these ideas sound great, but they're really using a resource like the beautiful Willamette River as a prop, as a background. It's a scene that people want to talk favorably about getting a beer or having some ice cream. I just don't think commercial development belongs that close to the river, and putting a road in so close to the Willamette, again, it just contravenes nature. So that's why I oppose it, and I think we need a great deal more study of the issue before moving forward on it. Thank you.
The applicant rebuttal comments, are there any of those?
Nope.
Nope? Okay. At this time, we would normally clo-- oops, there he is, all right.
I'll address Mr. Sonnixon's comments about the assertion that the proposal results in privatizing public land. And the proposal changes the zoning of land, and we have an assortment of zoning on the subject property now, ranging from heavy industrial to public land. In order to make the property available for redevelopment, whether that be public or private entities, we need to change the zoning from something other than public land into the special area zone. So in no way does the proposal privatize public land. Furthermore, the proposal results in approximately eight acres of public open space along the Willamette River. And the special area zone includes a form-based program to ensure that that public open space will be designed in accordance with the master plan vision. Second, there was a concern about the road next to the Willamette River. And we are within the Willamette Greenway, which is designed to preserve, protect, restore the scenic historic qualities of the Willamette River. The Greenway does not preclude development from happening within its boundaries. The applicant has voluntarily established a setback that will prevent any future development from being located any closer to the river than any existing buildings. The setback generally averages 150 feet along its length of the Willamette, its width, 150 feet, and the road is located outside of the setback. Furthermore, there are examples of roads inside the Greenway Boundary elsewhere in Eugene. Lea Harris Parkway on the Otson side is within the Greenway Boundary, as is a portion of Fairland Street Bridge. So we've taken appropriate provisions to separate development from the river and to ensure that there is public access, public open space, and the opportunities for restoration and enhancement between those boundaries. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we would normally close a public hearing and a public record. Is there any counselor who wishes to hold the record open for written testimony or to continue the hearing to another time? Counselor Taylor?
I wish to hold the record open.
Okay. For how long? You want to speak to that? Catherine?
No. If you could state a specific amount, Counselor Taylor, if you could state a specific amount of time that you wanted to leave it open?
Two weeks. Does that work?
To receive additional written testimony?
Do you ask if you want to keep it open to receive additional?
Oh, yes, to receive additional testimony, yes.
Okay. When are you, when are we scheduled to take action on it?
We have July 8th is another work session, and then there is action scheduled on July 22nd at a work session.
So is there any problem with keeping it open?
Point of order, is that a motion?
I'm just asking a question. Hold on for a minute. Okay. So, so everyone's supposed to, so we would want to close on the 21st, correct?
That's right. Mayor, Counselor Taylor, what we would like to do is to close the record this Friday so that we'd have an opportunity for one week of additional rebuttal, and that would ensure that all of the testimony and evidence is in the record and that the record's closed before your deliberations.
So you're saying just a few days?
Until Friday.
Till Friday.
Friday at 5:00.
Okay. Better than nothing.
Is that a motion?
Yes, I move that we keep, do we need a motion?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. I move we keep the record open till Friday.
Moved and seconded.
No, that was my point of question, was whether or not it was a motion. That's what I was asking.
And there will also, just to clarify, there will also be then an additional seven days of rebuttal period. So the, there will be a total of 14 days before the record is closed entirely for the rebuttal.
I can hardly hear you.
I'm sorry. Seven days, so it'll be until Friday that we'll take additional written testimony. There will be another seven days after that for a rebuttal period.
There's no timing problem with that?
No. No timing problem for that.
Okay. So we will vote on Counselor Taylor's motion. All those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Okay, so it passes, none in opposition, so till Friday, right?
Thank you, yes.
Yeah. All right, so that's about, pardon?
I think George has a motion.
Oh. I think we're done with the whole, this is the end of the script, right? We're through with, all right, thank you very much. So we do have other business this evening. You voted to, George, I mean Counselor Brown.
Well, first of all, I wanted to thank everyone who came out for the public hearing. It was really good to hear all your views. And I seriously underestimated the amount of people that would come to give testimony at the public hearing when I made my motion, which passed, to have an hour tacked-on work session to discuss MUPD revisions. So I would like to make my third and final motion of the day, and I'll speak to it very, very briefly if I get a second, but I--
Second?
I move to cancel the post-public hearing MUPD revisions work session and direct the city manager to reschedule that work session, as said is practical, practicable. Second?
Moved and seconded.
Yeah, I, it's very important, we have--
Just a pause, before everybody leaves, thank you very much. I didn't even say thank you for everyone showing up. Thank you so much. Okay, go ahead, Dirk.
Well, you know, it's much later in the evening. I thought that, I didn't realize there'd be this many people, which is very gratifying, but I think that the subject is so important that we need to be, I'm starting to feel a little fatigued, and I wonder how many other councillors are starting to feel the same way. It's better to devote full attention to this very important matter and with calm, clear, fresh minds. So I'm happy to postpone it, but we do, I want to emphasize, we do need to take some time on this one and try to really get it right and have a good product that we can bring to a public hearing. Thanks.
I appreciate your motion, and I think it's smart to approach this with fresh minds. Yes, yes.
And what we'll do, Mayor, is we'll go back and we'll just send out what could be a little bit of revision on the agenda here in the next couple-- little bit of revision on the agenda here in the next couple of days that talks about where we think MUPD would fit into this as we move towards the end of July.
All right, all right. So we're going to, you put a motion out, we need to vote on the motion. All those in favor, please indicate. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8. None in opposition, it passes, and with that, I do believe we are through with the business.